I want to call the Muskegon County Board of Commissioners meeting together. Rise for an invocation. Let us pray. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us be glad and rejoice. And while we're rejoicing, let us keep and be aware that our decisions impact the citizens of the Muskegon County in many ways. And as always, guide us with wisdom as we make those decisions. Always watch over those who protect this oath here abroad. Amen.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call man.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Cross.
Here.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Ingle.
Here.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Here.
Commissioner Longmire.
Present.
Chairman Mahoney.
Here.
Commissioner Plummer.
Here.
Commissioner Scolick.
Excused.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a forum. Next, approval agenda, there's a couple of things. First of all, you have an addendum on your place for the administrator's report. And under my report, I would like to add a Energy Services Coalition Award for the Muskegon County under C. Be approved as amended? Moved and supported, Commissioner Ingle was supported by Commissioner Collins to support the amended agenda. All those in favor? Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. And the approval of minutes for the meeting of October 25. It's moved by Commissioner Cross, seconded by Commissioner Plummer to approve the meeting minutes of October 25. Any discussion? Changes? Concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. For now, part of the meeting, we have a public comment on an agenda item. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on an agenda item? Done, we can move forward. There's some communications that were in your packet, known from Waxford County. Any wishing to discuss those? If not, we can move on to committee reports. Courts and Public Safety, Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Courts and Public Safety Committee met on November 1, 2011. It was recommended that I move CPS 11/11-40 and 41.
Moved by Commissioner Snyder and seconded by Commissioner Ingle to accept the Courts and Public Safety Committee recommendation of November 1. Any discussion? Seen none, roll call man.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingle.
Yes.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes.
Commissioner Plummer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries.
And that concludes the report?
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Human Resources Committee, Commissioner Plummer.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Resources Committee met on November 1, 2011. It was recommended I move HR 11/11-83 through 91.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Plummer and seconded by Commissioner Collins to accept the Human Resources Committee report of November 1. Any discussion? No. Roll call man.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingle.
Yes.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes.
Commissioner Plummer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Plummer. Ways and Means Committee report. Commissioner Collins.
Mr. Chairman, the Ways and Means Committee met on November 3, 2011. It was recommended that I move WN 11/11, days 146 through 156.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Collins, seconded by Commissioner Ingle to accept the Ways and Means Committee report of November 3, 2011. Any discussion? Commissioner Jaeger.
On November 152, I really feel like we're spending $60,000 here in the wrong direction, and we should be putting this money toward helping sell these 18-year-old kids don't show up to these things and we don't get. I don't think we're accomplishing what we should be accomplishing. I think there's a better group of people we could work with who'd be a lot more effective.
Thank you. Who else? I will indicate that I think the grant doesn't allow us to deal with the films. And I have been to several of these e-car things, and most of the folks there seem to be very enthusiastic about it. Anybody else? Roll call man.
Commissioner Ingle.
Yes.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes, on everything but 152.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes.
Commissioner Plummer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Nine yes, one no on 152, ten yes on 146 through 151, 153 through 156.
Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report. Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Okay, under my report, there's a proclamation declaring November 2011 National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Moved and seconded that we issue this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Next is the Department of Human Services Board appointment. Let me just make a couple of statements first. This has been a difficult decision for me. Father Jack Legault has been a passionate advocate for his whole life for those who need it, and at Brookhaven for almost 20 years. Committee and myself has recommended that we pass that torch to an individual that I'm sure will share that same passion. I'm going to recommend to you Ms. Joan Rapp as our DHS appointee. So.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Derzinski, seconded by Commissioner Longmire to accept that recommendation from the chair. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Rapp.
Thank you for the opportunity to.
Okay. Let's see, what else? Department, Energy Services Coalition. I have a plaque here which will be placed in our esteemed office. I just got it this morning. It's Energy Services Coalition, Michigan Chapter, which is, this certificate is awarded to Muskegon County in recognition of their commitment to energy savings, performance, contracting in the state of Michigan. That's dealing with the, obviously, the Honeywell contract. Would you like to say more? Madam Administrator?
Myself and the Sustainability Coordinator of the Public Works Director yesterday attended the first inaugural awards event of the Energy Services Coalition yesterday in Lansing, and we were given the award for our performance contract with Honeywell. And so I accepted it on behalf of the commissioners, and the plaque is much more attractive than what.
This is not the official document that we in our room.
There is a plaque, a nice wooden plaque that's in the commissioner's room today.
If I may, Keith, I would imagine is scanning the energy savings bills very carefully. We did that, and it's, it can be substantial, but you gotta keep an eye on what they're doing. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, that completes my report. Madam Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and County Board Commissioners. I present to you today for your consideration, authorize the adoption of the proposed Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance and rescind board resolution under which the Department of Public Works currently operates the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control permitting function. Thank you.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Derzinski, seconded by Commissioner Ingle, authorize that adoption and the change therefore. I think the change was in time, the time for your suggestion about guaranteeing a timeframe by which the applicant would get a refund. Any discussion? I suppose we have a roll call man.
Commissioner Jaeger.
No.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes.
Commissioner Plummer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingle.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and County Board Commissioners, I present to you for your consideration, accept the grant funds from the Department of Justice to allow the sheriff to purchase bulletproof vests.
Moved by Commissioner Cross, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to allow the sheriff to accept the grant to purchase bulletproof vests. Any discussion?
Two, I wondered if these are replacements. I believe all our officers have them, and I hope they're, the ones that they do have are handed down particularly to the VFW post that collects these and sends those to Afghanistan where they use them to line some of the vehicles that they drive. I just hope they're not.
The sheriff has, the sheriff has a five-year replacement schedule for these bulletproof vests, so these are within that replacement, and I will check with him regarding the VFW.
There is one post that does that. I'm not sure which one.
We'll check.
Dave would know it. Dave Beery would.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call man.
Commissioner Longmire.
Yes.
Commissioner Plummer.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Derzinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingle.
Yes.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman and County Board Commissioners, I present to you for your consideration, accept the recommendation from the Human Services Board for the appointment of Mr. Martin Rosenfeld as Brookhaven Administrator.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Collins, seconded by Commissioner Ingle to accept the recommendation of the Human Services Board for the appointment of Martin Rosenfeld as the Brookhaven Administrator. Any discussion?
Is his favor, is he less than what the last one, not that, when he starts at this price?
Yes, he is actually. This is less than what the former administrator started at.
When he finished at?
2007 is when the former one started, so the.
Oh, so it's less than even 2007?
Yes, yes, yes.
And is there like a yearly raise in his?
This is step five, so there will be one yearly raise for this position, and then it will be at the top of the pay scale.
So, once he gets the top, we can, you will go higher or?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. I suppose we should fold, and then I'll introduce Mr. Rosenfeld here. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. And I present to you Mr. Martin Rosenfeld. You want to come to the podium and give us your name, please?
Where's the podium? That podium. Yes, my name is Marty Rosenfeld or Marty Rosenfeld. And. And. I'm a Spartan, if I might add. Well, welcome.
Wait a minute.
I'm in a mixed marriage, it's all right. I went to Michigan, so I live with that.
Welcome to Muskegon.
Thank you, thank you.
Looking forward to working with you for a long time.
Thank you. It will be my pleasure, and I hope that I can bring a great deal of success and honor to the position.
Thank you. Anyone have questions, Mr. Rosenfeld?
Where do you come from? I live in West Bloomfield, and so I'm coming from there. I have, you want to know my background?
Oh, I'm a graduate.
Oh, yeah. I'm from Michigan, was born in Flint, and have lived here my whole life. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You're gonna lay it on this side.
Sorry?
You will lay it on this side.
I'm looking forward to, I care about this winter. I have to buy new tires. Thank you.
That's a short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Old business. Do we have any old business coming for this commission? Seen none, new business?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, Father Legault is leaving, and he has been in this community for 50 or 60 years for doing great service here in our community. And I was wondering if we as a body will be honoring him in any way, or do we ever do anything like?
Yes, we will. Commissioner Snyder?
Well, I was going to offer a resolution thanking him for his long service to the county and to the people of the community. And I would so move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Ingle to offer a resolution honoring Father Jack Legault, not only for his service to us, but for his long service to this community. Any discussion? Seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Any other new business? Any other new business? Seen none? Now, a public comment on a new topic. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on a new topic?
Please.
We have an end to leave.
Please, thanks. Can I do it right here? Sure, just give us your name for the record, please. Thank you. My name is Dan Mills. And thanks for taking the time to hear me. Anyway, I'm a Microsoft certified application developer, and I am employed. And I have a mathematics bachelor's degree, I have a physics minor, and I have a master's in physics education. I have a Michigan professional teaching certificate that expired a couple of years ago before that. And I have a lot of experience, I had eight years teaching in the public schools, and I've taught in five different colleges and universities. Before that, I was in a business with my two brothers, and in 1989, we were awarded in the Muskegon Country Club, the Muskegon Area Economic Growth Alliance prestigious Entrepreneur of the Year award. Now, I'm here to announce my involvement with the Occupy Muskegon movement. I brought a friend of mine, Joe, he has a nice little residence on Rodham Drive just north of Pear Lake. He's been living in a little hobo camp since he got back from Occupy Wall Street, cooking stew and that sort of thing. Another one of our members in this core group, about 30 people who meet every single day in the wind and the rain and live out there. It was a retired, last assignment, he was managing a portfolio worth more than $2 billion with a B for the, one of the federal military agencies. Now, you ask yourself, why would we be doing this? And the answer is that through our own personal experience or through the verifiable and authenticated experience of others, we know, we know that this system is broken, the economic system is broken, the education system is broken, the political system is broken and corrupted from the top to the bottom, inside and out. And there's a better system, it's called democracy, we call horizontal democracy, it really works. It's working with thousands and hundreds of thousands of people, and it really does work instead of this top-down carbocracy. And thank you for listening to me. We can answer questions, it's your pleasure. I'd like to have my friend Joe talk if that's okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
I would like to thank everybody for.
You mean sir?
We need your names.
My name is Joseph Lee Hock, HLCK. I live on Rodham Drive in North Muskegon. I'd like to thank everybody here for inspiring me with your horizontal democracy, I appreciate that. What got me involved with Occupy Wall Street was many of my friends and relatives are baby boomers, and they are retiring, and they lost their 401K and their pensions, or nearly lost all of it. Takes one catastrophic illness to lose your home, once you have to depend on your, just your social security. They played by all the rules, they paid their taxes. Everyone in this room probably knows somebody who lost almost everything. Our movement stands for ending the crony capitalism. We want to end the love affair between Wall Street and Washington. This is, this is a democracy and not quite a plutocracy. I'm talking to the deans of many universities at the East Coast, I believe, deans of economic departments, and they all said, hey, why didn't we do this 40 years ago? Why didn't we do this 30 years ago? And we have the support of every continent in the world, we have the support of thousands of cities in every country in the world, and we're currently at about 2,500 cities in America. Forty-three percent of all occupiers, or forty-three percent of all people in the United States support Occupy. Sunday at 12 o'clock noon, we're having Occupy Muskegon Forum, and we'd like for everybody in this room to stop by if you can. If you have an issue, we can address it, or maybe we can learn from you as well as you learn from us. I look forward to seeing everybody here in this room on Sunday. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Just a quick question, you want to repeat the time and the location?
Yeah, our general assembly starts at 12 noon at Hagley Park. And I thank you very much. Good day.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? I inadvertently skipped over the liaison reports, so, and I've been reminded that I did, so no objection, we'll go back.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, which was November 7, Windsor Dick met at Nueo County at the SHAC, and we were given the official demographics and economic projections for all five counties in northern Ottawa. And I have a copy here, but I'm sure one was sent to our administrator for us. The report contains population forecasts for employment trends, and these reports use its past trends and existing economic activity and anticipated growth. So actually, it's going into 2024, but it will give you a better idea of what's really going on and what to expect. And also, in talking to Sean, there was a lot of discussion regarding the West Michigan Economic Development Partnership that we were presented with a few weeks ago from Muskegon Area First. And that was presented to us by Ed Garm and Muskegon Area First. And Sean shared some concerns about the partnership because he feels that in developing that partnership, there is a possibility that Muskegon County could lose out because of what he foresees as the board, which will leave our county out, and when they're making those decisions, we're not going to have any input into it. And it sounded very, very serious enough where I think we need to have Sean come in to us and give us an impression of what he's talking about. And, yes.
If I may follow up, I was at that meeting, this board that's independent, as Sean explained it, from this board actually could create tax-free zones in Muskegon County. And Lou, I think that's the way you heard it, and we would have no say in that. Now, I know this is in the infancy, didn't say that right, it's in the infancy, and they will be back to us, but I, I thought some eyebrows were raised about why this partnership with this other county, and it could be partnered with Windsor Dick and include the other county, and then we would have a little more input on this board. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Did I hear that right?
We'll have to look at it again because the way that it is set up now, they will form that board, but we will not have, the business people will have positions on that board, but not the county.
Just a second, please.
That's problematic because we've been, it's a situation John and I have talked about for 10 years where other municipalities granted tax-free areas in our jurisdiction, and that's.
No, we won't go there. No, we won't go there. But thank you for that. Commissioner Longmire?
When I asked Ed, is that the same thing I asked Ed about us being excluded over time? You know, it sounds good, it's on paper, but he won't be at the table to make any decision. That's definitely.
That's right, and we were drawing a map to show how it would be laid out. And the plan with the west plan would be there, and then there would be a board over here, but these would be the boards of the directors, and we would not be included. They will be the ones that will be making the decision.
And the county is developing mostly including King County, I'm sure.
Well, it is, yes, but they also talked about the water waves, and we are the ones with the water over here on the western side. I think that we need to be extremely careful that we might just get pushed out.
I guess I have a problem with private industries setting their own tax-free areas. That's a, that's not a good thing.
Commissioner Snyder?
Seems to me that we need to take a look at the ordinance we adopted some time ago. If I recall, that we did adopt an ordinance, or we adopted a rule that tax-free zones could not be created in this county without prior approval. We could not, they could not be extended without prior approval, and we did that very deliberately, and I think we did that about two years ago, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
I would like to have Mr. Williams take a look and see if, under this statute, if they have the ability to override that rule that we've, that we've adopted here. I think that's essential. I will say this, I'm in favor of regionalization where we can, where we can get to it, and I think it's an important aspect. I think, as a matter of fact, after Commissioner Longmire's question, I had, I'd shared that concern, but I happen to think that the more people that we can get behind economic development on a regional basis, the better off we will be as a region, so. While I understand Windsor Dick's interest in trying to maintain its position as wealth, I think we need to keep this open as a matter of fact to take a look at it and try to support it to the extent it does not interfere with our operation locally.
I would just add that there is an intergovernmental local agreement with the initiative, and that Corporation Council is reviewing that, and so that will be something we'll look closely at.
The legislature.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else run liaisons because we jumped to them.
We had another one that we met on November 2, we went down to tell them to look at Smart Committee, and of course, there was a lot of talk about the loan commission, and there was a lot of pros and cons on that. But also, we were given, we were toured the airport there, and they were breaking grounds for the jail that afternoon. But, and there was, Commissioner Jaeger was there, I don't know if he has. But, and there's, Commissioner Jaeger was there, I don't know if he has any comments.
They went out for 147 million for their jail, building new one. They came down and never got approved and they decided to rebuild the jail ahead, at present, so we really still should be an option we're looking at. And then on the road commission, I think for majority were, they liked that option, but they didn't necessarily want to do it. They just like having the option there, so.
I think the plan that we had adopted back a few years ago on our jail included using our current facility, not necessarily in its exact configuration, but certainly not discarding it. When we move ahead and move ahead in a staged manner that would eventually, in a matter of time, get us to where we want to be, which is not that dissimilar from what you're saying they did.
Yeah, and they saved 20 million towards a $60 million renovation. So, that was the way they got through by proving that they were going to save money.
Thank you. Any other liaison? You've got the road commission's budget. Everybody got that in their box, I think, so, you know, for next year. Commissioner?
Friday is Veterans Day and at the Causeway there at 11 o'clock, there will be ceremony honoring the veterans.
Yeah, I believe at the mall, there'll be one.
Yeah, I think there's a mall, also.
Anyone else? None recognize Mr. Daipie who's stuck, who's stucking out with us for a while? Yeah, McCrimmon from Aggleston and Bethany Ryan from Aggleston. I think that's all of the elected officials I see. With that, I can accept, I maintain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.